Good evening, everyone. It's 6:30. We'll go ahead and call the board meeting to order. Mr. Cusick, would you please perform roll call?
This is Best.
Present.
Mrs. Davis.
Present.
Mrs. Epling-Skinner.
Present.
Ms. Harless.
Present.
Mrs. Hudson.
Present. Welcome, everyone, to our July 22nd. And yes, I did have to glance down at my computer, board meeting. Obviously have not written the date today. My name is Nikki Hudson. I have the privilege of serving as our board president this year. To my far left is board member Kelly Davis, who's our board vice president. Board member Amber Epling-Skinner, our treasurer, T.J. Cusick. To my right is Dr. Bowers, our superintendent, board member Stephanie Harless, and board member Jennifer Bust. If you'll, please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't believe there have been any edits to the agenda. May I please have a motion to approve the agenda as published?
So moved.
Second. Do you please call for the vote?
Mrs. Best.
Yes.
Mrs. Davis.
Yes.
Mrs. Epling-Skinner.
Yes.
Ms. Harless.
Yes.
Mrs. Hudson.
Yes. Thank you. Motion carries. This brings us to our visitor comment portion of the agenda. You'll bear with me while I just read some reminders. The school board and administrative staff encourage and appreciate community interest in meetings of the Board of Education. This section of the agenda is designed to hear the views of community members about their schools and items on the agenda. Each speaker will be asked to address the board at the visitors' podium so that the speaker's remarks may be heard, clearly heard. The speaker should give their name and street address and limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Consistent with our policy 9130 on public complaints, we ask that complaints about particular employees be referred to the superintendent and not addressed during public session. We remind all speakers that our district values and respects all people as they are and that our district is committed to creating and maintaining safe spaces for all of our students and community members. We want to remind our community that we value public input and always appreciate when our community members remember our district's values, refraining from using harmful or offensive language, and for sharing your comments in a civil and respectful manner. And finally, I would just remind- Annual Review of Title I Policies.
Thank you. The board has in front of you two Title Annual Review Policies that we are required to approve annually. So Policy 2111 is the parent and family engagement policy. Policy 2261 is the parent and family member participation in Title I policy. These policies both outline our responsibilities as a school district, as school leaders, in engaging families in our Title I schools and in our Title I process. Just a reminder, our schools that receive Title I services, Slate Hill is what we call school-wide Title I. And then we allocate our resources for extra staffing based on students who qualify. At Brookside and Colonial Hills, they both have half a staff member. Granby, Liberty, Worthington Estates, and Worthington Park each have one staff member, and Perry Middle School has one staff member. So all of those schools are impacted by these policies. We're not recommending any changes to these policies at this time. We feel like they've served us well and served our families well, but we do need to approve them on an annual basis per federal law.
Thank you, Dr. Bowers. Any questions or concerns from the board? Okay. Thank you. You get to keep going. That takes us to your report.
Awesome. Thank you. So remember, even though it's July, our mission is to empower a community of learners who will change the world, and we do that through four vision statements. So the first of those is we will engage each student with diverse opportunities to maximize every student's potential. So last week, we published a blog post entitled, "What Are We Doing About Cell Phones?" We're going to email this post to families as part of our next district-wide email so it has wider visibility. What I would say is we're planning for early September survey engagement of teachers, parents, and ninth through 12th grade students around this topic. And so the plan will be for each group to be in a separate engagement, but to share all those results publicly. And then our Board Policy Committee will get together throughout this year and review feedback before crafting policy that we need to have passed by July of 2025. So we'll start the school year where we ended last school year, but we are, you know, in that process and planning for engagement once the school year starts to get feedback from those separate groups. The second vision statement we have is that we'll provide a safe environment where every student can grow intellectually, emotionally, socially, and physically. Tomorrow, Governor Dewine is planning to sign a bill into law requiring all schools to have AEDs. So we were fortunate to have a soccer coach just last summer save a young person's life when the student athlete collapsed on the track, thanks to our coach's actions and the ability to have an AED present, which we had. The governor's office felt compelled to invite the coach and the family to this occasion and has reached out to us requesting to host this event at Worthington Kilborn High School. So we think that's good policy and one that frankly originated through this event in Worthington Schools last July. Our third vision statements will provide consistent communication, promote dialogue with our community. We are excited to announce the launch of our new website. It's designed to better serve our students, parents, staff, and community. Key benefits, just more user-friendly navigation, so hopefully it'll be easier to find things. The massive improvement, I think, is in mobile accessibility. When you access the website on a cellphone, obviously that creates enhanced communication. Hopefully it has comprehensive resources, interactive features, and improved accessibility. So the website is still continuing to be built, so you'll find a few places where it's not totally built out, but it is live right now, and we will be promoting that when we get into August here, which is just a week away, a little over a week. Fourth, we will be responsible and transparent with our community's resources. Guys, believe it or not, fall sports begin next week, including marching band. We're excited to have many, many students back on campus. The new paved practice area for the band and parking for the school day has been installed on the Thomas Worthington front lawn. That is temporary, so when the construction fence is removed and people are able to see that from 161, there will be a large sign that will remind the community that this is temporary during construction. It'll be, when that construction process is over, it goes back to being grass as it was previously. But we are excited for that space for the marching band to be able to move forward.
Excellent. Thank you, Dr. Bowers. Any questions or comments?
Okay. Cell phones. A hot topic. So you talked about teachers, parents, and students, high school students, and getting feedback from them. And at that time, after you get that feedback, then you'll bring it to the policy committee?
Yeah, that was my plan, Mrs. Davis, which was want to engage those groups and get their perspectives, right? So teachers have a perspective. I think students, at the 912, that's really where the conversation part-wise, have a perspective. And obviously, parents have a perspective. I'm not thinking that we open that up to the wider community.
Okay.
I think this is a conversation that is one where a parent of a student needs input into this process. Obviously, students and teachers need input. So the thinking was, let's get school started. So I was thinking, right after Labor Day, we'd be able to run these, what we call exchanges, surveys that are open-ended, that provide a lot of qualitative data.
Okay.
Run that early into September, but I want to get school started so that we're not, there's just so much in August that I think if we do that too quickly, it gets lost.
Yeah.
So thinking, right after Labor Day, we'll get those results, share that publicly with the whole community, share that with the Board of Education, and then bring the policy committee together to begin those conversations around, you know, do we want to make shifts to our policy or codify what our current policy is, our current practices?
Okay.
We have, by law, until July of 2025 to have to have passed policy.
Right.
And I obviously, you know, if we are going to do something that creates a change in our school, we would also want to think about a transition plan for what that looks like.
Absolutely.
That type thing. And that's obviously a big if, but want to engage people that are really impacted by it to really make sure that their voice is part of our process.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure, like, what the framework and what it looked like going forward, especially with the policy committee and then coming back to the full board.
Okay.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Dr. Bowers, I just wanted to ask really quickly, will you remind us when some type of signage will be placed in front of or adjacent to the temporary space that's paved in front of Thomas, just so that we know when community members are going to see that? Because I anticipate questions.
I'll have to get a date. So right now, when you drive by, the construction fence is all still up out front.
Yeah, so you can see it.
That construction fence will come down, and when that comes down, the new sign should come up.
Fantastic.
I don't have an exact date on when that construction fence comes down, but when we have that, I'll share that with the board. But it should be, those two things should happen in conjunction with each other so that when you're driving by and you go, oh, my gosh, that's a really nice paved parking lot, but were they putting pavement in the front lawn? No, we're not, right?
Yes.
We're creating a temporary space during construction to make sure that our band has a place to practice, which is really important for them. And it also creates some more parking, as we are going to have some parking challenges next year. Temporary during construction, when construction is over, this does come back to be our front lawn of Thomas Worthington, all grass, that we've come to expect. And we want to make that clear, but it should be when the fence comes down, the new sign comes up.
Excellent. Great. Thank you very much. Mr. Cusick, would you like to give the treasurer's report?
Sure. Thank you. On tonight's agenda is a memorandum of agreement with our classified union to adjust the pay range of our payroll associates. We've fallen behind our surrounding school districts in this category, and we've lost a few payroll people over the last several years to them. So this MOA will help us retain that talent and essentially not continue to be a training ground for other districts to utilize. Two pieces of legislation that we will need to respond to financially that recently were passed, House Bill 147, requires student ticket prices to our athletic events be less than adult prices. So if you recall, we already established our ticket prices in June, and we currently have just one price, but as you also are aware, we don't charge Worthington students in grade six through 12. So this legislation basically impacts our visiting students. However, at the same time, the Ohio Capitol Conference, our conference, is recommending we consider increasing prices overall to account for increasing costs to officials, referees. So we'll discuss that internally and make a recommendation sometime in the near future. At a minimum, it will include a visiting student ticket price. Also, Senate Bill 91 updated the fraud training requirement that all public employees, including our five elected public officials, must complete by November 29th. And then we'll have to complete that every four years thereafter. It's about a seven-minute video. Jeff Maddox has worked with Public School Works. We're hopeful that they will roll that out to everyone and then account for that. The Otter State's office hasn't officially signed off on their version yet. We'll learn that later this week, but we're hopeful if that passes, we'll certainly let you all know. But November 29th will be the deadline to complete that. And then lastly, I emailed you out a commercial paper report tonight. Ohio Vice Code requires that I prepare that report annually in the commercial paper that we have invested in over the last year. In reality, this is part of our monthly report every month that I provide you, but officially we must aggregate it and check a box and say that I sent that to you, so I sent that to you today. That is all.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments from the board? Okay. That brings us to Board Committee Reports and Announcements. Nothing on your end, Jennifer? Okay, Stephanie?
I was just going to share that at the last Worthington City Council meeting, they adopted the Northeast Area Plan. So that's going to be, I mean, that's kind of a long-term, some short-term and some longer-term aspirational plans, but as it applies to our district, there is the opportunity for an increased tax base, right? If we can develop more businesses. But there's also some low-density and higher-density housing recommendations, which is great on all fronts. And then one of the goals is to kind of capitalize on some of the industry that's going to come from Intel, right? And one of the, I think, kind of a tertiary benefit to us and our district is that Intel has already indicated that they want to invest in education in general, and a lot of that is going to come certainly at the college level. But, you know, they're invested on developing workforce, right? And so if we have these kind of industries that are bridging that gap, I think there's a lot of opportunity for our students in the workforce development area and just general training and internships and things like that. So I think that's something that we definitely want to keep an eye on for all of our students. And they included the boundless area in the Northeast Plan now, so the zoning recommendations for that area are there as well. So all of the recommendations, 255 pages, I have it up on my computer right now, if you'd like to take a look at it, but it's on City Council's website. So I would encourage everybody to look at it. I'm really excited about it. I think, you know, like I said, it's going to take some time to rezone, it'll take some time to, most of that, those properties are not currently available. But to have a goal for an entire area, I think, is a step in the right direction. So that's my update.
Excellent. Thanks for sharing. Anything on your? And I'll just share that I attended the last Worthington Education Foundation meeting, I think it was last week. They continue to move forward with the development of, basically move forward with relaunching. So, you know, they attended the Memorial Day Parade locally, they attended the Worthington Hills Fourth of July Parade, trying to get the name out there again, reminding people that, you know, they exist and have done good work historically in the community and specifically, obviously, supporting the schools. They are revamping their website and rebranding themselves and will be, I think, sooner rather than later, another great asset to our teachers and our students. So not quite there yet, ready to launch, but very inching closer, most definitely. And that's all I had. That brings us to you, Mr. Cusick.
Thank you. I'd like to recommend that the Board of Education approve the minutes from the July 10th meeting as found in enclosure E1, please.
So moved. Second.
Would you please call for the vote?
Mrs. Davis.
Yes.
Mrs. Epling-Skinner.
Yes.
Ms. Harless.
Yes.
Mrs. Hudson.
Yes.
Mrs. Best.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. I'd like to recommend that the Board of Education approve the memorandum of agreement with the Worthington Education Support Professionals Association regarding classification adjustments per enclosure F1, please.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Do you please call for the vote?
Mrs. Epling-Skinner.
Yes.
Ms. Harless.
Yes.
Mrs. Hudson.
Yes.
Mrs. Best.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Dr. Bowers.
Thank you. I'd like to recommend that the Board of Education approve the Consent Agenda. That's items G2 through G9 on your agenda. Consent Agenda, please.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Do you please call for the vote, Mr. Cusick?
Ms. Harless.
Yes.
Mrs. Hudson.
Yes.
Mrs. Best.
Yes.
Mrs. Davis.
Yes.
Mrs. Epling-Skinner.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. I'd like to recommend that the Board of Education approve the donations, which are item H1 on your agenda. Approval of donations, H1, please.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? You'll please call for the vote.
Mrs. Hudson.
Yes.
Mrs. Best.
Yes.
Mrs. Davis.
Yes.
Mrs. Epling-Skinner.
Yes.
Ms. Harless.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. I'd like to recommend that the Board of Education approve item H2. Item H2 is an easement at Worthington Kilborn High School for American Electric Power so that we can have power as we go through our construction process.
So moved.
Second.
We're all in favor. Those little things. Any questions or comments? You'll please call for the vote.
Mrs. Best.
Yes.
Mrs. Davis.
Yes.
Mrs. Epling-Skinner.
Yes.
Ms. Harless.
Yes.
Mrs. Hudson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. I'd like to recommend that the Board of Education approve item H3. Item H3 is Impractical Busing Resolutions. As superintendent, I recommend to the Board of Education that we approve these resolutions confirming the impracticality of busing newly enrolled students, as I've declared earlier to Bishop Waterson, Bridgeway Academy, Calumet Christian School, Columbus School for Girls, Janowa Christian Academy, Art of Ohio Classical Academy, Immaculate Conception, Metro School, Our Lady of Peace, St. Andrew's, St. Charles, St. Francis de Sales, St. Joseph Montessori, St. Paul Catholic, St. Timothy Tree of Life Dublin, Tree of Life Carl Road, Tree of Life Northridge, Tree of Life Polaris, and the Wellington School.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Seeing them, would you please call for the vote?
Mrs. Davis.
Yes.
Mrs. Epling-Skinner.
Yes.
Ms. Harless.
Yes.
Mrs. Hudson.
Yes.
Mrs. Best.
Yes.
Motion carries. That brings us to Board Request Questions or Concerns. Anything on your end? No, anything on your end? Okay. I'll just state regarding the one statement that was- that was made for me tonight regarding personnel announcements. I mean, I think I personally feel comfortable that our administration keeps us fully informed. Dr. Bauer keeps us fully informed. We know what's going on, and that sometimes there are times when we don't have a meeting and/or months when we have one meeting, and there are things that need to get moving beforehand. So we don't have any concern, but I would say that to the extent that there are concerns, we can either talk through them tonight or we could plan to address it at our next meeting so that people can ruminate and think about it.
Yeah, I think that even if we had something in writing that said, just for us, that said, "This is how we handle it." I don't, maybe we do. I haven't seen it. But yeah, I'm fine with sitting on it for a little bit and thinking about it and just making sure that everything's covered, right?
Yeah. Why don't I just suggest, then, that maybe in, like, two meetings from now, or I'll just say the next meeting, I'll bring it up again during this section of the agenda. And if anyone has any additional thoughts or concerns, we can discuss them at that time.
Okay.
And then from a calendar standpoint, our next meeting is the first Monday of the month. Calling that out because that is different, and that's due to convocation, August 5th. And then we have the 26th and the 9th of September. Any questions or concerns regarding the calendar? There being no further business, then I'll call, I request a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Will you please call for the vote?
Mrs. Epling-Skinner.
Yes.
Ms. Harless.
Yes.
Mrs. Hudson.
Yes.
Mrs. Best.
Yes.
Mrs. Davis.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thanks, everyone, for joining us tonight.